Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Counselor Cook currently is absent.
Okay, we've got the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. Approval of March 17th, 2015, City Council Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2015-035, approving the city recorder's canvassing of the returns of the March 10th, 2015 Washington County election and directing the city recorder to enter the results into the record. Resolution 2015-036, appointing Kurt Studer to the Budget Committee. Resolution 2015-037, appointing Christopher Flores to the Planning Commission. Resolution 2015-038, appointing Michael Meyer to the Planning Commission. Resolution 2015-039, reappointing Christine McGoughlin to the Library Advisory Board. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
My second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation: Eagle Scout Recognition. All right, I have, I see an Eagle Scout right there. Is this Miles Camp? Come on forward. Welcome, Miles. Yes, go ahead and sit. Push the button until the ring turns green and you are on. Thank you.
Nope.
There we go. Got it. All right. Okay. It's a little like Frogger. There you go. All right.
All right.
Miles, welcome and thank you for coming tonight. We wanted to congratulate you on your Eagle Scout Award and hear all about it. So tell us all about your...
All right. So for my Eagle project, I built a new sign for my church, which is, which now is, which is on Sherwood Boulevard, like, which is right down the road. My church was, my church was in the process of changing their name from Sherwood Presbyterian Church to Cedar Creek Church, which what, which that is what it is now, in March of last year, and we needed a new sign, so I volunteered to build it, let my pastor know. And first, I got a permit from the city, then I went to Home Depot and they donated all the materials that was needed for the sign. And so next, I, I had to get people to actually build the sign, so I went to, I announced the two Saturdays that I'd be working, and I told them that my scout troop, troop 116, at the meetings, and I told them that I'd be feeding them pizza, so that encouraged them. All right. On the first day, we dud the holes and put, filled them with cement and planted the posts. It was really, it was really sunny that day, so that was a good day to work. And the second day, however, it was pouring rain and miserable, so, but we persevered building the framework and we put the actual sign on. And then over these two Saturdays, I instructed the boys on how to do it. I led them as they built the sign. So, but it was a hard experience, but I'm glad I went through it. So, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yes. Does counsel have any questions for Miles?
I just wanted to tell you, I saw the sign and I thought, "That's a really great sign. It's really nice."
Thank you. All right, Miles. Well, thank you very much and I'll come down. And we have a second Eagle Scout that could not make it tonight, Riley Dixon.
Oh, you are here!
Oh, yay! Okay, well, come on up. I didn't get the RSVP for you, so, welcome.
I'm sorry.
I'm so glad that you're able to make it. So Riley, tell us about your project.
Yeah, so, um, my project, what I did is I built flower beds for Middleton Elementary School. I did six flower beds, four by eight, and my job is, I do flower beds as a job. I work with a, with a business called Griffin's Gardens. And so he's the one who, Preston Griffin is the one who donated the wood to me. And I had about seven or eight guys come down to the shop and I showed them how to make flower beds, and so they helped make all six beds and I led that. And then we went over to Middleton a couple days later and just placed them in there and just did the finishing touches and kind of talked to the school about where they wanted the placement of the boxes.
Fantastic. Counsel, did you have any questions?
I just want to say that I know both Riley and Miles, and I know that you guys put a lot of work and effort and you both have amazing work ethics, and I just want to congratulate both of you on your accomplishment.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and I will bring your... All right, we have next, citizen comments. I have a couple of already filled out forms. If anyone else would like to make a citizen comment, feel free to fill out a form and we'll recognize you to the floor. Jim, I want to say Folsky? Come on forward. He's already got the mic live for you, so... And Sylvia will have the timer there, and you'll have four minutes to comment.
Well, I don't, I don't have a lot to say, other than my wife and I live at 14391 Southwest Fair Oaks Drive, and every day, weather permitting if possible, my wife and I take our dog for a walk and we have to cross Murdoch from Fair Oaks Drive. And we'd sure like to see some kind of crosswalk put up there, because I listen to the news every night and it seems like several times a week, there's a pedestrian fatality in the Portland area, and I'd hate to see one out here, because that is a tough road to cross at times. So anything that could be done to accelerate the process of getting some type of crosswalk put in there at Fair Oaks Drive and Murdoch would be greatly appreciated.
Right. Thank you for coming in. And Cynthia Folsky?
First of all, I want to thank you for giving us some time to say this, but we do, and I, that's my husband, and so he laid the foundation for this. And we have about 11 children in our area that cross this street at least, and nobody crosses it less than two times a day. And it does, people do come down that hill. I don't know if you're familiar with Murdoch, but you come down that hill and they come pretty fast. And we have found that a lot of people, when we're standing there, will not stop. And you have to wait until all the traffic from both sections are on, but we just don't want to see anybody get hurt. And it would be great to have, you know, like, a little button you could push and, and a little flashing light or something like that, but just stripes on the road. In fact, we, one of my neighbors mentioned that they would like to go out about midnight and put stripes on the road for us to cross, and, but we were afraid we'd get arrested, so, so anyway, that's...
I mean, here's Ben.
You can see us out there, all four older people, out there with flashlights and paint.
Okay. So I have a question. Where exactly is that intersection of Fair Oaks?
It would be, one street would be Willamette Street, if you know where that is.
I do.
And the other one is our Fair Oaks Drive. It's just past the, I guess, the Murdoch Apartments, as you're going up the hill, going south, I guess. And on the other side of, is the Wildlife Refuge and, and the Blackberry Bushes and all that. So we're that first street there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Kurt Christensen?
Kurt Christensen, 235, 22520 Murdoch. And this project, we've been working on for almost a year, and I just got an email from Joe saying that they are working on it. Pretty much, the safety study that was done by Mr. Galati a year ago has some impressive numbers on him. In the middle of the day, there's between 200 and 300 cars an hour coming across Murdoch. And we've been living there for a long time, and it's getting kind of skip and hop to get across that road. Even in the morning, when we go for walks and we have lights on our head, the cars, they still don't stop. They just keep right on coming. Going downhill, they're doing 55 miles an hour. I printed out a copy for each one of you that I'll give to Sylvia, and just so that you don't think that it's just people over in Murdoch that's concerned about their safety. When I drive to school in the morning and I go down Sunset, I see kids right past Archer Glen. There's two or three places where the same thing is sort of happening. The traffic is not as bad, but I think we should take a look at safe crosswalks all over the city, so that we don't have a fatality, so we don't get any of our kids killed, or some of us older folks. If the city needs to construct a really cool cross-section there, I appreciate that, but I would really more appreciate that we get something put up in the meantime, so that we can cross that. The police have had their flashing signal up a couple of weeks in the back. They took it down when the battery ran out, and I stood and watched when that signal was coming on, blinking. And for about a week, it changed the total behavior of the people. You could just see a whole row of cars, the red lights coming on. It was hugely effective. And I, I've looked at how that same blinking light, right in front of Archer Glen, comes on and it shows what speed that you're doing. So we're talking about modifying people's driving behavior. So think about, you know, I appreciate, Joe, that there are design parameters that, you know, has to be done, but while we're working through those budgets and design issues, either the blinking signal over there, parked over there again, would be a great use, or something of a similar nature. A few more tickets probably wouldn't hurt either, so. So I will give you the copies.
Thank you, Kurt. Nancy Bates?
Good evening. I'm not going to be a broken record, so I'll try to keep my brief, my messages brief here, but my name is Nancy Bates, and I too reside in the Fair Oaks Division, and I am interested in supporting some traffic control at the intersection of Murdoch, Fair Oaks, and Willamette Drive. I've been a resident here for 24 years, and for the past year, as Kurt and several of the other residents have mentioned, we have attempted to try to get some sort of traffic control in that area. It is very difficult to cross the street. My husband and I both walk daily, and we cross that intersection twice every day, and very few drivers recognize their obligation to stop at that unmarked intersection. It's not uncommon for us to wait for like 20 or more cars to go by, particularly during high-traffic times. Frankly, we're almost shocked when a driver stops, and, you know, we wave and we try to encourage them to continue to do that, but it is not common for them to do that. And sadly, we even see a Portland motorcycle officer, you know, just pass us by as we're standing at the intersection, so it's just, I don't know if it's not well noticed or what, but it is not a common occurrence to see pedestrian, pedestrians allowed to cross ahead of the drivers. And as Kurt mentioned, the speed studies that have been conducted by the city in the past year have demonstrated significant percentage of drivers substantially going over the 35 mile per hour limit. So I would strongly encourage that the city introduce some form of measures to control this intersection, so that both pedestrians and drivers will be safe as they negotiate that intersection. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, Fair Oaks neighborhood. I appreciate hearing your concerns, and I think that I echo those concerns. We want to have safe routes. A few months ago, I went to the Washington County Corrigan Committee, and there was a presentation from Safe Routes to School Program. And so I immediately went up to that representative, and City Manager Joe Gall and I are going to be meeting with them soon, because we would like to have safe routes to school all over our city, where we have ending sidewalks and no crosswalks. And these, these improvements do not come without cost, and so if we can find that cost elsewhere in these programs, we, we want to make sure that we are looking for that. So I will add this request to that list when we meet with them, and I appreciate your concerns. Thank you for coming. Wade Anderson?
Good evening, I'm Wade Anderson, from here in Sherwood. I'd like to take a quick moment to let the council know about two items that I think may be of interest to citizens in Sherwood. The first is the community garden, and while I know the city's researching the creation of a community garden, and that's a good thing, you may not be aware that Sherwood already has two that are shovel-ready and have been here for several years. Both gardens are open to anyone. One is at the Sherwood Community Friends Church, 23264 Southwest Main Street, and their website's sherwoodfriends.org. The other is at Cedar Creek Church, 21901 Southwest Sherwood Boulevard, and their website is cedarcreeksherwood.org. I'm most familiar with the garden at Cedar Creek Church. By far, most of those that have a plot there are not members of the church. There's, I think there's maybe three plots that have members, that the rest are, are folks from the community. Cedar Creek Church's planning day is this Saturday, April 11th, from 9:00 to 11:00, and on May 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00, there's a meet and greet for fellow gardeners and a local nursery. You'll be bringing the warm crop items like tomatoes and stuff that are available at discounted prices. I don't know about you, I have trouble growing tomatoes without something like that. Both gardens are a great resource to our community. The second event is the Running Water 5K, which is on Saturday, May 9. Most of us live in homes that are within fewer than 12 steps to a clean water source. I didn't realize until recently that a child under five dies every minute as a result of diarrhea caused by contaminated water, poor sanitation, and unsafe hygiene practices. Five years ago, our family started participating in Running Water as a chip timed from Uber Thon's 5K, it's run here in Sherwood. 100% of the proceeds go toward providing freshwater wells to the residents of Zambia, Africa. It's amazing to me how a cup of water can have such an impact, transforming the health in a village and freeing up countless hours each week so children can receive education, parents and especially women can have time to help provide for their growing family. It's really been a transformation for women in these villages. I'm encouraging our citizens to join my family on Saturday, May 9, at 8:30 for this great community event. The Run Walk starts at the Senior Center parking lot. If you're not available that weekend and still would like to take a part, you can of course sponsor somebody else to walk or run in your place. More information is available at runningwater5k.org, so, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any more citizen comments? Okay. New Business: Resolution 2015-040, authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction contract for the Highland and Orkut Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Craig Sheldon?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So, we're asking for authorization of the City Manager to execute a contract with K&amp;R Plumbing Construction Company, which was the lowest responsible bidder we received on this project. Little background, we were doing routine maintenance, video inspection, and come across the bad, two sets of bad sewer lines that had bad ratings. You have a five, on a scale of five, when you rate a sewer line, and we had a lot of fours and fives throughout this system, which can create issues for maintenance as well as property owners in the future. So we'd like to be able to go in and replace these two sections of sewer line. We'd use a pipe bursting method to minimize the impact of the property owners, where it's very tight space in this area. And we did advertise in the Daily Journal Conference on 11th and 13th of March, with a mandatory bidding on the 17th of March, and K&amp;R was the lowest responsible bidder, as I said. We'd like, the contract is for $172,884. We'd like a 15% contingency. We do run into problems when we're trying to reconnect old existing sewer lines, so I'm sure we will use some of that, as well as working in the tight space that we have. So the total would be $198,816 we're asking for.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Greg, what was the second highest bid?
Second highest bid was $121,000 for both projects. So, actually, the second highest, the K&amp;R Plumbing on the actual Orkut was $70,295, and the low bid was $64,846 on that one. And on Highland Street, the high bid was $121,997, and the low bid was $108,0038.
So how much lower or higher was that from this total amount?
So that was $192,292.
Okay.
Had to get my security code, didn't work on that.
Is there any concern that it can't be done for $172?
Any concern that it can't? It can be done for the $172. There's some stuff in here that we're going to try to save a little bit of money on, but when you, just like we went into Lincoln Street last year, when you start trying to hook up to existing sewer lines, there could be additional costs there. And you are very tight with the existing sewer and the water lines and other utilities in the area, so it's not like a newly developed street. So we will use some of that contingency, I'm sure, throughout the project. But there's going to be, there's probably going to be some savings on the $172, so I can't tell you. I'd just rather go in with 15%, and when it comes, and under that, that'd be great.
How old are the lines on...
You know, I don't know when that was put in exactly, whenever that development's, probably, it's been quite a few years ago.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we recaptivate and adopt Resolution 2015-040, authorizing the City Manager to execute a construction contract for the Highland and Orkut Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project.
Second?
I'm second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Counsel announcements? Counselor King?
I just want to thank everyone who voted in the last election, and, for my supporters, and Hollywood did that.
Counselor?
I want to, none of my boards met this month, have met in a long time, but nothing for anything but the library, who is constantly having activities and events. So the, I'll just tell you about, the author, Tony Russo-Hamilton, and illustrator, Britta Nicholson, will be here on Saturday at 1:00 to talk and tell their kids and adults who join them about food and all the wonderful things about how to grow your food and everything sustainable living and that sort of thing. So if, if those things are fun for you and interesting to your little ones, I would join them at 1:00 on Saturday. And next, the National Library Week, which has been celebrated since 1958, is coming up. There's a bunch of events happening here in Sherwood, and you can check the events out online, but they're happening at all libraries across the region, too. So some of the major ones here, the Six Word Contest will be ending that week, and I'm pretty excited because they asked me to be a judge, so I will be judging some of those. And I have had a kick reading some of these stories. Some of them are not appropriate, and that's fun, and some of them are quite entertaining, so. Also, the Art of the Storytelling Festival will kind of round everything out on April 18th, over at the Center for the Arts at 6:30. That is going to be a really, really fun event, so I would encourage everybody to go. It's free and should be pretty fun. 503 Encorked will be there. I know I've said this every week, but it's quickly approaching. April 18th seemed really far away a few weeks ago, but it's right around the corner. So, that's all I have.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Counsel President Robinson. I was remiss in not going to...
You can continue and do us afterwards.
Okay. All right, because I, I feel bad.
Don't worry.
So, go ahead. Go ahead, Counsel President.
Well, we had another Citizen Advisory Committee meeting with the Sherwood West Concept Plan last week, and it was really interesting. We talked about the Sherwood Housing Needs Analysis, and very, very large amount of information, but it was extremely informative. And we had a great group. We met at the police station, and it was a much better facility to meet, and people could hear things, so it was really very awesome. The coordinator that we, our consultant, is just fabulous in moving things along and making sure that we all get the information that she had planned on, on presenting or having her people present. And I just encourage you all to, are those online? Can you watch those videos?
Yes.
Or are they taped?
No, the video, the meetings are not videotaped. The information is online.
Okay.
Including the draft Housing Needs Analysis.
Okay. So if you are interested, please take what steps you care to do. It's very, very interesting information. And then, one of our more exciting events for Planning Commission next week, on the 14th, is a public hearing on our medical marijuana dispensaries. And so I urge all of you to come and listen to what the Planning Commission has come up with, with staff's recommendations for language that will regulate the placement of medical marijuana facilities. We are not touching recreational marijuana at this point in time. OLCC is developing those regulations on the state level right now, so, but this is kind of the first step, and we'd love to have lots of people come and give us your thoughts on that. And that will be coming to the council shortly after our public hearing next week.
Actually, just to piggyback, I was going to mention this, it is likely to be April 28th, assuming the Planning Commission acts on the 14th. We have, tentatively, and we have a quorum, to have a special council meeting on April 28th to consider that item, if the Planning Commission makes a decision on the 14th, so...
Very well. Counselor Anderson?
Just to let people know, the high school is doing the production of Thoroughly Modern Meli, which opens April 24th, runs through the 26th, so it's a two-weekend run, and then again from May 1st to May 3rd at the high school. And we have Into the Woods auditions next week on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at Cross Ridge Church. Our Police Advisory Board met on the 19th, and it was an interesting meeting. It's a brand-new board, so they're spending a lot of time just getting up to speed. The chief did a great job at, he brought Sylvia along to go over requirements of public officials and give people opportunity, gives members opportunity to ask questions. Angie was there taking notes, and everybody basically had an opportunity to talk about where they're from, why they're interested in it. They elected a chair and a vice chair, and they had a special meeting to forward concerns to the council about... about medicinal marijuana and locations. I didn't make that meeting due to a death in the family. But I know that they met again so that they'd have the opportunity to send some information to the council. And I would, was wondering if staff could give an update, or maybe you can give an update on the dog park?
Yes.
I've had people, okay, I'll let you handle that. And I just wanted to ask staff, there's, oh, I guess Tom's here. I had a citizen ask me about political signs in county right-of-way. Are political signs supposed to be in the county right-of-way? I.e. Roy Rogers, Oregon Street, and Edie, I guess?
So I assume you're talking about inside the city limits, correct?
Yeah, I don't know why I would care outside the city limits, but yes.
Yeah, let me, let me check into that. I mean, I know that we've looked at that issue before and, but I don't know off the top of my head whether or not we can enforce our sign code inside there right-of-way. I believe we can, but let me.
Well, I thought it was actually the counties in code that didn't want political signs in the public right-of-way in Washington County streets.
Unless Mark knows the answer to that question, we'll look into it and get back.
Yeah, I don't know.
Send a.
Because I wasn't, we've reviewed it so many times that the county may have updated their sign code recently, I don't know. But somebody asked me and I said I'd ask staff, so.
Yes, we'll get back to you.
That's all I have, thank you.
We had a resident come at our last council meeting, asking about the Senior Center. Do you have a Senior Center update for them?
We have not had a meeting unless they had a meeting the week my brother-in-law died or during spring break.
Do you know when the next meeting is for them?
Nope. And I'd ask Christian Switzer, but she's not here. And she's my lead, so.
I want to announce that Archer Glen is going to be hosting their Eagle Marketplace and Fair on April 17th, starting at 4 o'clock. This event is tremendous, always a tremendous success and a lot of fun. So I encourage participants from throughout the community.
Yes. So the Parks and Recreation Board met on Monday last night. And a couple of things to report. There will be a neighborhood public meeting on April 20th upstairs in the mezzanine at 7:00 p.m. And that will be where the final design for the Woodhaven Park will be, the Phase 2 piece of it, will be displayed. And citizens can comment on that. And they'll be taking comments and ideas. And they'll bring those back to the Parks and Recreation Board in May. And then they'll discuss that and come up with a final plan. So that's moving along. And they're very excited to have something to do on the Parks and Rec Board. There's also another announcement, which is the dog park. And the city staff, Kristin Switzer's working with Mears Design Group. And they are in the process of finalizing the design. So we could potentially have dogs barking probably in September, October. They'll break ground sometime in July, once the funds get allocated. So there'll be a whole lot of barking going on. Also, for schools, I believe the Hopkins Hoopde Do Carnival is this Friday. So for those of you who are watching the video before Friday, from 4:00 to 8:00, I believe, is when the fun will be. And then one other item is the Robin Hood Festival is now accepting applications for maid-marrying court. So if you have a daughter that is in elementary school, and I believe they skip middle school, and then, so the younger court and then the senior court is the high school. So my daughter participated last year, had a great time. It's a great service opportunity for the girls. They do a lot. And it's a, it's a fun, fun time for them.
Thank you. I'm going to let you go first.
Okay. Mayor and Council, one quick follow-up on the dog park, which will be in my proposed budget to allocate funds. I did just find out that the Bark for Your Park contest that we participated last year, which was a national competition, that we actually made it very close to being in the finals, is going to be back up again in May. So we will probably spearhead that effort, that community effort, to try to get folks to support the dog park. The winning community receives $100,000 for their dog park. And I believe there's four runner-up communities that receive $25,000. So we're going to solicit that outside dollars like we did last year. And we were very close last year, so watch for that. So you'll be able to bark for your park. One of the comments, and we're not going to get into the design of potentially what could happen out on Murdoch, but staff has been working on some alternatives. And we're in budget season right now. And I'm probably dealing with about four or five other pedestrian safety improvements and requests from neighborhoods that we're juggling. One of those is actually the location where someone was tragically killed crossing the street, which has a lot of pedestrian volume, which is over by the new shopping center. We do not have endless amounts of money within our budget. We have constraints in terms of where we can do improvements. And we get requests throughout the city. So Murdoch is one we've been evaluating, and we may do some improvements there. But it is juggled with others throughout the community. Another one that I just received, actually the mayor received a concern, was where the stop sign is over by Snyder Park. People are just blown through that stop sign, especially at rush hour. It's like it doesn't exist. And Craig's got some ideas to put some enhancements to try to reduce the problems at that stop sign, where there is supposed to be a stop and people are not driving and obeying the law. All of those things cost money. And I think if we could fund every pedestrian improvement in town, when you get the CIP in a few weeks, the Capital Improvement Program, you will see a tremendous amount of pedestrian improvements, sidewalk infills, other types of things throughout the community. We can't fund them all, quite honestly. So I will be seeking your input as a council in terms of priorities, because you're going to see more projects than what we can fund. So that's coming. We don't go out and just put improvements in because a neighborhood has expressed some desire or some need. I want to respect the folks' concern, but there are others that we are considering as well. So I just wanted to follow up on that. And last but not least, and Tom has an item he wanted to bring to the attention of the council. We are in budget season. We're finalizing, I'm finalizing, and making some decisions in terms of releasing my proposed budget. It will be released publicly and to the council on May 1st. Your first Budget Committee meeting is on May 13th. So we're going to switch gears after your next meeting, after you get done with recreational, or not recreational, medical marijuana and quickly switch gears to budget. So. Tom, you had an item you wanted to share.
Sure, yeah. I just wanted to take this opportunity, since we're starting to run out of time, to remind all the councilors and everyone here and anyone who might be listening that we are soliciting requests for proposals for the leased space at the Center for the Arts. We have advertised in the Gazette, the Tiger Times, the Daily Journal of Commerce. We have signs out on the site, signs on the building. And we have selected a realtor, a real estate firm to help us with this process. And so towards the end of this month, beginning of May, we're going to be taking requests for proposals that we get. And hopefully, we get a fair number of people who are interested in being there. And we'll go through a selection process to see if, which one of those will be complimentary to the center and go through those and hopefully end up getting that space leased. So I just wanted to mention it. We will be very close to the end of the time at our next council meeting. But I just wanted to remind people that that opportunity is there. And we are really excited about trying to get that space leased as soon as we can.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Okay. So I wanted to give my report. Last week, Jennifer Harris and I went to visit the Beaverton Community Gardens and several members of staff. And there are two community gardens there that we had the opportunity to view. It was very exciting. They had great ideas. And our two key staff people got paired up so that we do not have to reinvent the wheel here. It's been done in other communities. And so we are going to tap into their resources and give the very best product to our citizens that we possibly can. It was a, it was a fun day. And they're also two very different. One's a little bit more urban and the other one's a little bit more rural, a community garden. So you also have different choices there. So that was kind of fun. Then on the first, I was, I was very excited to attend the Industrial Partners Recognition Awards, where one of our businesses here in Sherwood received an award from Clean Water Services Cascade Columbia Distribution. And the award is for their responsible stewardship of the Tualton watershed. And so very, it's a, it's a very prestigious award for businesses. And so I was very proud to have a Sherwood business recognized at that event. This last Saturday, we had two great benefits that I attended both. The Egg Hunt for Hope for Emma Onderood and the Rose Family fundraiser at the, put on by the Sherwood Dance Academy at the Sherwood High School. Both benefit citizens here in Sherwood who are fighting cancer. So I was proud to be able to represent the city at both those events. This Thursday, our federal Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici will be visiting Sherwood. And I'll be giving her a tour of our new art center and also one of our great businesses in Sherwood. I believe that we are going to Mud Puddles. So that should be a lot of fun. Congresswoman Bonamici has visited our town several times. And I've had the opportunity to be her guide. And so I'm excited to have her back to see our new art center. Okay. Oh, I want to talk about the Arbor Day planting. So we're going to be having another Arbor Day planting coming Friday, 2:30, the Terrace in Sherwood View Estates. So anyone who would like to join, 2:30 at the Terrace in Sherwood View Estates, our Arbor Day planting event. I've done a lot of these. I can't even remember how many. They're a lot of fun, even in the rain. But I believe that the forecast on Friday is sun. So even better, because the ground is already wet for us. So it's nice and easy planting, but it won't be becoming pouring down on us. So I hope that everybody can come, because it's, it's a lot of fun to do these Arbor Day plants. On Saturday, I'm going to attend the Tualton Valley Fire and Rescue Volunteers Dinner. And so I'm looking forward to that as well. Tuesday, April 14th, library is going to have an open house for the staff and the electeds. So they're going to kind of give us a tour of their facility. And I'm sure that Council Harris will be right there pointing out all of the amazing things. No? Oh, darned all. Well, okay, I'll take notes and, well, you already know about it anyway. And then at 6:00 p.m. on that same day, we're going to be having at the Center for the Arts, our Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. So that is all I had for this evening. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.